Please silence your cell phones. Your phone devices. Please stand and vote. It's not proposal, we have our Homer County Legislature Dan. National today. Especially after being here for the first time in about a year and four months. We welcome Dan. And somebody please divide it with a drink. All right. All right. You're ready, Dan.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in their sky? Did through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say that as that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land and the sea! And the home of the brave!
Thank you, Dan. Dan, a big thank you to Homer County. Why don't you back? At the end of the year to be a fourth, I mean, three.
That's my constituent, he was a youth in government.
As he was. Nice to get in there. Please stand. Please stand before the chair. And then one more silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the fellow who is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kelly.
Penelope, present. Eamon, present. Nandisakis?
Present.
En, present.
Here.
Genie?
Here.
Pediong?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Wuhan?
Present.
Pediru?
Here.
Lono?
Here.
Stegeng?
Here.
Sassy?
Here.
Sierra? Siganga?
Here.
Sutherland?
Here.
Twotell?
Here.
Tui?
Here.
Hira?
Here.
Precious? Is Sierra not mine? I know Kaduk is going to give it up later.
Okay.
Right. No public participation.
We are. One vote is needed, we just decided. So. February 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully ask to move this on February 4th, March 4th, 2021.
So hit. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so carry. If there are no objections, the ten items number 10, 16, 19 through 21, and 23 through 26 will be voted on by all in favor.
Aye.
Oh, so carry. Okay, first, okay, we're going to go to consent. Okay.
Please.
Okay, legislator, one more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Firstly, I'd like to add, ask that to add the press a second resolution. Our request to replace the resolution numberized normalizing the achievements of the graduating class of 2021 for high school, trade schools, and postgraduate education declared the month of graduation of 2021 recognition and teacher appreciation.
I respect that.
Okay, it was revised to kind of standards?
That is correct.
Thank you, Governor Derrin. And, uh, make sure, maybe you just did it in a little earlier, because you know that, I know it's last minute, but it was changed privately, so, um, I guess we can go on. Do you want to speak further or? Harry, please. I thought you wanted us to do it earlier. Fast.
For the quick one, hit them, those seven.
Okay, right name. Okay. Okay, so as long as it's right name, if there are no objections. Okay, let's operate that. Okay. Yeah, okay, well, I'd like to issue my consent as well. As a solid agreement, to be placed on the internet. And my name is, I think, there's reasons for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Please add my name as well. Absolutely. Okay, if there are no objections, this is how it can be done. If yes, reserve yourself.
I'm looking at the findings, A and B.
Certainly. And we can always have this, we're about to vote on this all. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, do you need to put on the record the title of the resolution, second consent resolution? You want to read the titles?
It's the resolution, letter A. Legislature Hunan, the sponsor, Senator Penelly. Permission to memorialize the achievements of graduating class 2021 for high school, trade schools, and postgraduate education in defending the monument of the U.S. graduating class of 2021 recognition and teacher appreciation.
Stand.
All in favor? I'm not, we're just discussing, I'm sorry. Yes, so, I can add all the names added to all of those added resolutions. Absolutely. All other constituents? Okay. Michael sign yours. Okay, um, let's start with that. Michael's here? Yep. Okay. Mike, do you want to add anything to the resolution? Everybody else is here. Oh, Mike, I thought you meant Mike Kaduk is here. Okay, you are here. Okay. You want to speak to it, Governor Derrin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to begin by saying that it's wonderful to be on this call today. And to know that this is the first time, the worst time that we'll have to hold back together in the United States. It's definitely a symbol of what we're all hoping to see from the rest of the country. So it's wonderful to get back to business and to be on this constituency, to answer your questions and so on. But I believe that this was last year, and it was obviously very challenging for us. And, you know, obviously, last year, we were really happy to at least be able to show this, to talk in our appreciation and gratitude, and to memorialize all the wonderful achievements of students across the country, but particularly here in Homer County. And so I just wanted to continue that tradition, as we're saying that so many individuals who have been working very hard, in very challenging conditions, obviously not having the traditional graduation in many instances, I just wanted to pay, you know, attribute to them. I know that everyone here in this room cares about the future of our youth and everyone who is planning to progress their lives, and so I'm very excited that we were able to put this onto the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Further discussion? And this is a, is it a voice vote? No, it's a roll call. Roll call. And please vote. Stay out of eyes if you do have a remote legislator, so instead of speaking, sign up for it, please. Say, we're coming.
Yes. Penelly?
Penelly? Aye.
Kaduk? Kaduk? You start at six on your cell phone. Start at six on your cell phone.
Do you have to do that every time? Do you do that every time? Okay, we'll come back to what you had, you know, probably, yes, like, I'm sure it's gonna go as best. Okay, next, next.
Nandisakis?
Nandisakis? Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Pediong?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Wuhan?
Aye.
Manuda?
Yes.
Donald?
Aye.
Stegeng?
Aye.
Sassy?
Yes.
Siganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Twotell?
Aye.
Tui?
Yes.
Hira?
Here. I have a question.
Nineteen ice.
Okay, thank you, Governor Derrin. Okay, the next resolution, as you know, I don't usually like last minute consents unless they're time sensitive, and this resolution is certainly time sensitive, because the parole board, from what I'm told, is meeting in August, so it's very time sensitive. And I happen to notice this, this time, it's a record, the supervisor, Mar, at the town hall, with a petition drive for this very purpose, and that's how I came upon it, and it certainly brought up memories to me, very, very bad memories, and I'm sure the family is sure we're living in today. I remember, it was my birthday, actually, today was my birthday, 1896, I was in there for six years, and I remember hearing the news of this, and I was just, I was very traumatized. I mean, the Maybrook community was shaken, so overwhelmingly that you can't imagine. And the Homer County community. I remember sending the police officers over there to help search and find evidence, and it was just so traumatic. And I can't imagine, I said to Rob Sassy, and I both have 12-year-old sons, I just can't imagine if that happened to us, how we, I mean, it's just, just, just so, and to think that this person is up for parole next month, we just can't sit by idly, and, you know, I know Dennis Lay, he's very concerned as well, but he didn't want the family to go through the same kind of grief with this, but we got their permission to bring this resolution, because they know how important it is for this person not to go free. And, you know, our communities were so traumatized that I just can't imagine it would even be considered. Similar to the resolution that I brought a few years ago, Judith Clark, Jimmy O'Donnell rallied the cause with law enforcement, and we passed that 20 to one, so. I'm sorry. Yeah, why don't you read it, Kelly, then I'm gonna ask Supervisor Mar to say some words as opposed to.
I just have a question, President Hira, asking Sassy. Resolution, Hira, question, whether the parole will release the waiver of order of an Adam.
Sorry.
Okay, okay. Let's have, before we go on to discussion, I'd like to say Supervisor Mar, we do come up and say a few words with respect to the petition drive and other information.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, really appreciate you taking this up so timely. So I am here today on behalf of friends and family of Danny Meyer. Much similar to Chairman Bresch, who was mayor at the time, I had a much different experience. It impacted families from all over the town of Montgomery and Hudson Valley area. At that time, I was an 11-year-old myself, and my parents and other parents had a tremendous reaction. I remember not being allowed out of the house for months, and just understanding the impact. We just couldn't believe, like, so many parts of our country that go through atrocities like this, that it could happen to us, that it could happen here. And now here we are, 25 years later, and this individual, who was 22 years old at the time, brutally murdering a 12-year-old child, and now is looking at potentially having his freedom. And that's something that the family was very concerned about, they've been concerned about for quite some time. So they approached me and other individuals to help them get the word out, so we created an online petition, and I'm pleased to say that over the last several days, there's over 3,300 signatures from the online petition. So this is something that will certainly help give promotion to that online petition, to create more signatures there. We're very happy you're directly sending your resolution to the parole board itself. I plan to do the same. We encourage many individuals to do that as well. And I just wanted to read a statement on behalf of Rhonda Vioria, who has been speaking on behalf of the family, as you can imagine, they really want to try to stay out of the limelight and not relive what happened to them so long ago. The family of Danny Meyer and those of us involved in the mission to keep this killer in jail, thank you all today. My daughter Shannon and I began this as a grassroots campaign to inform and remind the public of the heinous and unpainable crime. We cannot forget this horrific time and the devastation for the Meyer family. We hope that with the community's help and the commitment of our elected officials, that we can keep this child killer behind bars. We thank you, Chairman Bresch, and the county legislator, for giving us the power of our voices to be heard. Thank you, from Rhonda Vioria. And she also had a quote from Helen Keller, "Alone we can do so little, together we can do so much." And that is what I was asked to come here to say, really appreciate all of you working together. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but if not, just thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you so much, Brian, for bringing this before. And this is not politicizing, this is certainly something that has teeth when we send a resolution from the entire legislature to the parole board. So the Maybrook community came together so much after this tragedy, they built a beautiful playground in Danny's memory, and I know Mayor Laye would help preserve that over the years, and it touched him as well. So thank you again, Brian, and I encourage all legislators here to debate it past this. Any discussion? Yes, legislator Don.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So another tragedy here in Orange County from 25 years ago for Danny Meyer, but now a hostile to the family that had to relive this tragedy in open court in the parole board. My family, everybody knows, my best friend was killed in the line of duty. We were very fortunate after responding, troopers killed the person that killed Billy's son, to live through this. The trooper that was killed after Billy, Trooper Emerson, killed, this killer just got out last year, was paroled. So letters to the parole board to keep this Juan Panado in prison is helpful, it has an impact. Juan was, I think, 22, and posed as a teenager, was placed in a foster home, entered the country little league, he's from Guatemala, and I'm told that if he does be granted parole, he'll be sent back to Guatemala, but that doesn't do anything for the family of Danny Meyer. They have to live with this, that the person that killed their son and robbed them of all the love and affection that a 12-year-old could bring, seeing him go through his youth and become an outstanding citizen. He got buried in his boy scout uniform. So besides, on his way to the little league game, he's a boy scout. I feel terribly for the family that they have to go through this with the parole board, but if there's people that want to write to the parole board, it's www.doccs.gov. You can just click on the Board of Parole, and there's a box there to write a letter. Panado's inmate number is 9787185. Hopefully, besides those 3,300 county signatures, we get an equal number of individual letters sent to the Board of Parole where this killer remains in jail. Thank you, Genie.
Thank you very much, legislator Don. I know this is very close to home, you, this thing is yours, so thank you for those statements. Okay, without further ado, I will entertain roll call.
Penelly?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Yes.
Nandisakis?
Yes.
En?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Pediong?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Wuhan?
Aye.
Manuda?
Yes.
Donald?
Aye.
Stegeng?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Siganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Tui?
Yes.
Hira?
Yes.
Bresch?
Nineteen ice.
Thank you very much, legislators. Okay, before we move to resolution one, I just say, the county execs, anyone else is in the house? Welcome. Okay, number one, which is a roll call.
District State, Bulusek, Manuda. Resolution to firm the appointment of a county executive to Orange County Order of Attorney for the Directors.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Go ahead, Governor Derrin.
I would like to just be active.
Pardon?
I want to be active.
I will serve. Absolutely. Okay. Pardon? Okay, roll call.
Penelly?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Yes.
Nandisakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Pediong?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Wuhan?
Aye.
Manuda?
Yes.
Donald?
Yes.
Stegeng?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Tui?
Yes.
Hira?
Yes.
Bresch?
Yes.
Nineteen ice.
And number two, which is a voice vote.
District State, Bulusek, Manuda. Resolution authorizing the acceptance of permanent grain adjustments from San Jose, Rio Grande, and Los Angeles. Chapter.
Okay, roll, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carry. Number three, another voice vote. Go ahead, Kelly.
District State, Bulusek, Manuda. Resolution to Orange County Legislature authorizing conveyance and ownership of the county-owned border meeting in both spots.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, Twotell added. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, number four, another voice vote.
District State, Kaduk? Penelly? Resolution authorizing the county executive conjunction with the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation to submit an application to New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation for the recreational trails program.
Second.
Discussion, yes. Pediong?
Thank you, Chairman. This has been a project in the making, something that I've taken great interest in. It's located in a beautiful town of Deer Park, in one of the most beautiful parks, our DNH Canal Park, that's owned by the county. I can tell you personally, I've hiked these trails that we're looking forward to building. We whacked a whole bunch of weeds down and got bit by some ticks, safe to remove, of course. And I look forward to inviting all of my colleagues out there, always looking for some volunteers. This grant funding will help us complete over two miles of hiking trails that will really showcase the beauty of western Orange County, and I ask all my colleagues to vote me affirmatively. Thank you, Chairman, and please add me as a sponsor.
Definitely. Is this the same area that you and I walked with Commissioner Brooks?
When we drove you up there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I did walk a little bit, thank you very much. Yes, sir. Wasn't puffing a puffing that much. Okay, somebody else have their hand up over here? Yeah, Sutherland added, Paul Stegeng added, Barry Genie added, and Captain Stegeng, Peter Tui, Joe Manuda, and Twotell, and Wuhan added.
Mr. Chairman, all of them were added to this on the list, and I gotta go by email.
Okay, thank you, then. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, number five is a supermajority resolution, bonding resolution. There you go.
District State, Bulusek, Manuda, Benton, and Sutherland. Amending bond resolution dated July 1st, 2021, amending the bond resolution adopted August 1st, 2019 in relation to the construction of a snow removal equipment building at the estimated cost of $141,443.
Discussion. Bureau added. Wuhan added. Stegeng added. Stegeng added. Okay, roll call.
Penelly?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Yes.
Nandisakis?
Yes.
En?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Pediong?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Wuhan?
Aye.
Manuda?
Yes.
Donald?
Aye.
Stegeng?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Twotell?
Aye.
Tui?
Yes.
Hira?
Yes.
Bresch?
Bresch.
Two ice.
Okay, number six, another requiring, resolution requiring two-thirds vote. Okay.
Legislators, Penelly, Bulusek, Benton, and Heinz. Amending bond resolution dated July 1st, 2021, amending the bond resolution adopted August 1st, 2019 in relation to the rehabilitation of transit apron at the Orange County Airport at an estimated cost of $786,986.
Second.
Bureau added. Okay, further discussion? Roll call. Oh, Stegeng added. Okay, roll call.
Penelly?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Yes.
Nandisakis?
Yes.
En?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Pediong?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Wuhan?
Aye.
Manuda?
Yes.
Donald?
Aye.
Stegeng?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Twotell?
Aye.
Tui?
Yes.
Hira?
Yes.
Bresch?
Bresch.
Two ice.
And number seven, a little voice vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Penelly, Bulusek, Benton, and Kaduk. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Public Works Airport to accept and appropriate a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration pursuant to Section 99-8 of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Bureau added. Discussion. Mr. Ganga added, Wuhan added. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, number eight, this is a roll call.
District State, Bulusek, Penelly, Benton, and Manuda. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2021 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works Environmental Facilities and Services pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Discussion. Yes, Tui added. Roll call.
Penelly?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Yes.
Nandisakis?
Yes.
En?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Pediong?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Wuhan?
Aye.
Manuda?
Aye.
Donald?
Yes.
Stegeng?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Tui?
Yes.
Hira?
Yes.
Bresch?
Yes.
Nineteen ice.
Okay. Oh, he wants to speak? Can he speak? Okay, go ahead, Mike, you're muted. There you go. Can't hear you, Mike, do, does he need to do this? Uh, can't even talk, does he need to push star six? You're unmuted, Mike. I'm gonna need to group on this. Okay, yeah, we're gonna have to delay it, Mike, sorry. We're not hearing you. Okay, number nine, another supermajority vote, bond resolution, go ahead, Kelly.
Legislature Dewey, Menuda, Benton, Kulusek, bond resolution dated July first, twenty twenty-one, bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of improvements at various county parks stating estimated total cost thereof one hundred thousand dollars, appropriating, setting out, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of a hundred thousand bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Discussion? Luhan? Discussion or, or added? Added, okay. Yes, uh, Southern added as well. Okay, Siganga added. All right, roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Dew? Nani Sakis?
Yes.
En?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fajion?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Aye.
Ruskevich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Siganga?
Yes.
Southern?
Yes.
Totell?
Aye.
Dewey?
Yes.
Euro?
Yes.
Pression?
Yes.
Nineteen eyes.
Okay, ten through sixteen, excuse me, will be voted on collectively, if you want to be added to any one of those, or abstain from any one of those, speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, is it voice vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, number seventeen is a roll call.
Legislature Benton, resolution authorizing the private sale and conveyance of certain county-owned lands acquired by reason of a failure to redeem said lands from intact sale to Orange County pursuant to section ten eighteen four, the real property tax law and Orange County amended local law two of twenty-ten.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Dew? Nani Sakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fajion?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskevich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Siganga?
Yes.
Southern?
Yes.
Totell?
Yes.
Dewey?
Yes.
Euro?
Yes.
Pression?
Yes.
Nineteen eyes.
Okay, minority leader Pedu, after the meeting, as you would have been recorded, if you were to vote for him. Okay, number eighteen, roll call vote.
Legislature Benton and Pedu, resolution dated July first, twenty twenty-one, resolution of County of Orange, New York pursuant to section four one point zero zero of the local finance law repealing in part various partial unissued bonds, authorizations of certain bond resolutions of said county, which authorize the issuance of bonds to finance various improvements in and for the county.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Dew? Nani Sakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fajion?
Yes.
Heinz? Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskevich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Siganga?
Yes.
Southern?
Yes.
Totell?
Aye.
Dewey?
Yes.
Euro?
Yes.
Pression? Nineteen eyes.
Okay, nineteen through twenty-one? Sixteen, added. No? Number one is? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, number twenty-two, which is a bond resolution, supermajority.
Legislators Totell, Dewey, Amo, Luhan, Benton, and Benelli, amending bond resolution dated July first, twenty twenty-one, bond resolution of County of Orange, New York, amending bond resolution adopted December eighteenth, twenty twenty, in relation to financing the preparation of surveys, preliminary and detailed plans, specifications, and estimates necessary for the construction of new medical examiner's facility at the total estimated cost of three million dollars.
Second.
Discussion? Menuda added, Siganga added, Ruskevich added, Bureau added, all Democrats added. Okay, and Southern and Sassy. And Fajion? Yes, and Cheney as well, of course. Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Nani Sakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fajion?
Yes.
Heinz? Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell? Ruskevich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Siganga?
Yes.
Southern?
Yes.
Totell?
Aye.
Dewey?
Yes.
Euro?
Yes.
Pression? Nineteen eyes.
Okay, twenty-three, three through twenty-six, anybody wants to be added, or Siganga added? No abstentions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, number twenty-seven, which is a voice vote, go ahead.
Legislators Sassy, Fajion, and Sierra, resolution authorizing Orange County Executive on behalf of the Orange County Department of Emergency Services, Fire Services, to enter into intermunicipal agreement with the counties of Rockland, Sullivan, and Ulster pursuant to section one nineteen O of the general municipal law.
Second.
Add, Bureau add. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.
Can I ask a question back on number twenty-two?
Yes.
Oh, wasn't that possible, three million dollars, the last time he's in the description?
Carrie, you wanna address that?
Yes, thank you. Um, the, in, there was an addition of two million dollars to the new total, it was previously, we'd authorized one million, so the new total's three million, and that's what's in here. It was an additional two on top of the one that had been provided, we'd provided for the design element of the project.
Back to twenty-seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, twenty-eight, a voice vote, go ahead, Kelly.
Legislature Sassy and Fajion, resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Emergency Services to amend resolution sixty-three of twenty twenty-one to reappropriate previously accepted grant funding.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Number twenty-nine?
Legislature Totell and Southern, resolution making supplemental appropriation to the twenty twenty-one Orange County budget for the Orange County Office of Beagging pursuant to section four point zero nine, the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, number thirty?
Legislature Dewey, Southern, and Totell, resolution authorizing Orange County Executive on behalf of the Orange, Orange County Office of Beagging to enter into intermunicipal agreements between County of Orange and the Village of Montgomery and the Village of Greenwood Lake pursuant to general municipal law, section one nineteen O.
Second.
Cheney added. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, round thirty-one, right? Okay, go ahead.
Legislators Menuda, Totell, Pedu, and Cheney, resolution of the Orange County Legislature authorizing inclusion of certain real property in the consolidated Orange County Agriculture District Number One pursuant to the New York State Agricultural and Markets Law, section three oh three A and three oh three B.
Second.
Question, uh, added? Uh, you wanna speak to it? Go ahead.
I'm gonna ask if we could please remove one of the properties and vote on it separately, Atlantic Fiber Optic LLC in the Town of Volch, if we could vote on that property separately. Um, the town did not support them being added to the ag district. Discussion back and forth on that.
Okay, let's take that one first, then.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion on that? You mean to?
Second.
Okay. Yours, what are you second? Oh, to remove it? Okay, I'm sorry. You wanna make that a motion now to remove that?
Yes.
And then, and Kevin Darian's, okay, discussion on the, the motion to remove this, to gently table it or remove it altogether? Oh, okay, we need to vote on that, or we can just do it? I don't think we need to vote on that. Yeah, let's do it, all right, all right, we're on it. Go ahead, go on. You must say anything else? You said the town didn't support it, did the ag?
Yeah, the-
The Ag Department, my protection board, support it?
Yes, and there's been some controversy as to what's actually on the property, the size of the property, and how it can, uh, qualify as ag. I know it's, there's been some back and forth, we've had, uh, discussions and community on this, so I just, I'm not comfortable with supporting that as part of the ag district at this time, especially the opposition of the open municipalities, so that's why I'm asking that be separate, as I'm in favor of the other properties being added, but I'd like to vote in all.
Okay, Paul, you're gonna give us clarity on this, and sell us, and, and what was the vote of the, the town board, if, if, you know?
Yeah, they submitted a letter, uh, voicing some concerns, uh, about the current use of the property. Um, according to ag district law, in order to be in the ag district, uh, you don't have to currently, uh, have an agricultural operation on that property, but the property has to be capable of supporting a, uh, agricultural operation, uh, which it does, fit those requirements. Uh, the reason, uh, this is being added, uh, last year during the eight-year review, uh, the property was, uh, removed, uh, as were a lot of properties, and property owners had the, uh, ability to contact the planning department to ask to remain in the ag district, whoever this, uh, particular property owner, owner, um, I believe was in a hospital, I think, but he'd been in a coma at the time, so he wasn't able to, um, uh, request to stay in, so that's why he's, uh, made the application to be added. So he's just basically putting it back in.
Okay, and he would, he would have almost been added by the asking last year, remember?
Yeah.
He had to send out two letters, there was a lot of confusion, and, and I had to send out a second.
If he was capable of contacting the planning department to request to stay in, he would have been, would have stayed in, so, that's the reason that-
So is your recommendation to adopt this today?
It's my recommendation, the ag board did recommend, uh, putting this property back into the ag district, and I would concur with that.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, roll call on the, the motion to remove it from the, the list. I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, we are voting, we're, we're voting on this one now, right?
Voting on this property, I'm sorry, voting on the other-
Okay, so a yes vote is going to be, we didn't need to vote to sec, to vote on it separately, we needed a motion. Correct. Okay, so we're voting on, yea or nay on this, to keep it in the district, a yes vote is to keep it in the district, and no vote is to not, like Lori said. Okay. All right, roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Nani Sakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fajion?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
Aye. No.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskevich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Siganga?
Yes.
Southern?
Yes.
Totell?
Aye.
Dewey?
Yes.
Euro?
Yes.
Pression?
Yes.
Nineteen eyes.
Okay, now on the other three parcels. Discussion? Bureau added. Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Nani Sakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fajion?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
Yes. Yes.
Donald?
Yes.
Skavitch?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Hotel?
Yes.
Dewey?
Yes.
Euro? Freshen?
Yes.
Nineteen eyes.
Okay, number 32, which is a voice vote. This is just setting the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
legislators Genie and Hotel. Resolution providing for a public hearing upon the tentative budget in the Orange County Community College for the fiscal year beginning September 1st, 2021 pursuant to Section 6304 of the Education Law. Public hearing will be held in chambers of the County Legislature in Orange County Government Center, 255 Main Street, Ocean, New York, on the 5th day of August at 3:15 p.m.
Second.
Discussion? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. And legislator Ruskevich will chair that public hearing. Uh, 33, which is a voice vote?
legislators Hotel and Sassy. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Youth Bureau to accept and appropriate funds from the friends of the Orange County Youth Bureau pursuant to Section 99-8 of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor? Yes, Ruskevich added, and Luhon added. Yes, Southern one too. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Number 34?
Legislators Manuda and Stigenga. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature confirming the appointment by the Majority Leader of the Orange County Legislature to the Orange County Industrial Development Agency pursuant to Sections 856 and 912 of the General Municipal Law.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Added? Do you want to speak to it? Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to say, I will be voting no on these next two resolutions. My no vote has nothing to do with Mr. Tamburi. I think he's well qualified, and I think he represents labor well. Uh, my objection has to do with having a potential conflict of interest, having a labor representative on the IDA board. Uh, currently, we have a five-member board that's been working very well. They do a lot of great work. I commend all of them. Uh, furthermore, um, you know, the ID, the DA and the state controller are gonna be coming out very soon with a report with some recommendations for the IDA, and also I know the state legislature's been working on a number of bills, which could also have recommendations or requirements for membership on IDA boards. Uh, therefore, I feel very strongly that we should hold off on any appointments to the IDA board until such time that those recommendations come out, and then, at that time, I think we need to take a look at them and sit down as a legislature and come up with a list of criteria for IDA board members, given the current situation with the IDA. Um, I think the optics of this appointment could be very bad, and I don't support it. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Your mic is hot, Jim. I don't know if you... What matters or not? Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wholeheartedly support the appointment of Dean Tamburi. He's a man of great character, and I think he'll do a great job on the board. The board is supposed to have seven members. The function of five is really handcuffing the existing board in my mind. They need four people to do anything, so to bring that board back to full strength as soon as possible, I think is in the best interest of the Orange County IDA. I have a pretty good track record of voting for confirmations of IDA board members. I voted no to Mr. Dianus' confirmation, and I call for the resignations of many members of the IDA in the past. So I would like to see everybody support Dean Tamburi to this board and make it back to the full strength. Those that argue it's a conflict, I submit to you that it is not. The IDA does not award any benefits to unions. The IDA awards benefits to projects and to landowners to create jobs in the region, and Local 17 doesn't get any IDA approvals. They don't ask for IDA money, and there's no guarantee that unions will get the necessary work from the various contractors. So to vote to bring a project here doesn't mean it's a vote for labor. It means it's a vote to create jobs in general, and I think Mr. Tamburi has a great background to help us with that. Thank you.
Further discussion? legislator O'Donnell and Ruskevich again.
Thank you. I agree wholeheartedly with legislator Heinz that this appointment will lead to more success at the IDA from the five members that are currently there. He'll add to that discussion. It's not a conflict of interest, and he's gonna sign a conflict of interest form, also an ethics form, so you need four votes now over there. This will help move projects forward, and I'll be supporting this, and I hope all my fellow legislators do as well.